I would like to call us to order and declare that we have a forum present of seven members.
How are you doing?
Yeah, come on, can you hear me?
That better? There you go. We welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interest of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board, members of the community. We'll begin this evening as we do all of our regular meetings with pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and a moment of silence. Here to lead us this evening, we've got students from Cypress Grove Intermediate School and Oakwood Intermediate, and with our principals from those two schools, Holly Scott and Josh Simak. Please come forward and introduce your students.
Okay, and I had to bring notes because both of my students are really involved in a lot of things in and out of school, so I didn't want to forget anything that we visited about. So first, I have Dylan Brode, and Dylan is involved in Student Council. He is, he, one of the things I love about Dylan is he supports some of our special needs students and is a buddy to several of our students in the general ed classroom. He's involved in Genius Hour, plays baseball outside of school, has been taking guitar lessons for two and a half years, and he does 4H photography, and this year he showed three rabbits in 4H. And then next is Annie Lee. She's a sixth grader at Cypress Grove. Annie is also involved in Student Council, participated and placed in UIL, plays the viola in orchestra, is an honor student, and also plays volleyball outside of school. And also want to recognize the Student Council representatives, Ms. Gillum and Ms. Laermon, who helped to mentor and lead these two students.
I have here with me tonight Sana Askari and Avi Pierre. Sana is a member of our dual-language program. She is a sixth grader at Oakwood. This works, right? Sana's a sixth grader at Oakwood. I actually met her when she was a very small child. I'm getting older somehow, I don't know how that works, but she had a sister that was at College Station Middle School once upon a time. I've had a great time with her the last two years. One of the things that's most special about Sana, and I'm sure you're not seeing it tonight because she's a little bit nervous, is she's always got a smile on her face. Both of these kids are the epitome of what you want your students to be at school. They're nice to everyone, they're liked by everyone, they're kind and they're polite, and they've always got big smiles on their face. Sana is a straight A student, and we couldn't be more happy for her and more proud for her moving forward. We know that you will see her name in a newspaper very soon. Avi Pierre, Mr. Personality, one of my favorite students on campus. Only Peter Hurst and I will let call me Mr. Bald Eagle. I don't care what he calls me, as long as he puts a mister on it. Avi always has a smile, he has a big personality. You can hear him coming in the hallway, you can hear him in the cafeteria amongst 275 other students. Avi's one of our avid students, fantastic young man, big future ahead of him. In fact, next week at the talent show, he is an 80s rock fan, and he will be singing Believer by Magic Dragons. Magic Dragons, we had to come to terms on that. We X-nated a few songs before we got to that one, so unfortunately, I know most of the lyrics. Two fantastic kids. We couldn't have better representatives for you here from Oakwood tonight.
Please place your heart, your hands on your heart.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Pictures, guys, pictures. Take pictures of the board.
We've got several students, and we have one employee to recognize this evening. We're going to begin with Allstate Band. Two A&amp;M Consolidated High School musicians were selected to perform as part of the Texas Music Educators Allstate Orchestra, or Allstate Band, excuse me. Senior trumpet player Tex Bonner Sarah and junior horn player JR Speakman are among the top 2.6 percent of musicians in the state by receiving this honor. Allstate is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. Bonner Sarah and Speakman were selected through a process that started with more than 68,000 students from across the state. Please come forward and receive your certificate. When I call your name, go to Mr. Glen Winkle, or excuse me, to President Harris, and then you'll come through and shake everybody's hand and end with me. We'll start with Tex Bonner Sarah. And their, yes, and their director is Steve Frye. Come forward, Steve. Next, we have Allstate Orchestra. A pair of CSISD musicians were selected to perform as part of the TMEA Allstate Orchestra. Hannah Chang and Eric Gann are among the top 40 violinists in the state and both attend A&amp;M Consolidated High School. This is Chang's fourth time to be selected to an Allstate Orchestra, while Gann will be making his first appearance. Again, Allstate is the highest honor a Texas music student can receive. Both Chang and Gann were selected from a field of more than 600 violin finalists and earned the right to perform in San Antonio as a part of the TMEA convention. Please come forward to receive your certificate when I call your name. Hannah Chang. And their director is Jane McCormick. for the first time to participate, and a unique opportunity for College Station High School students. So four College Station ISD High School freshmen recently teamed together to participate in the DLR Student Challenge held at the National School Boards Association Annual Conference in San Antonio. Amaya Bowman from Kinsol, David Chang from Kinsol, Sunshine Wan from College Station High School, and Samuel Wu from College Station High School collaborated with students from around Texas to design solutions to global problems within certain career and technical education pathways. Three teams of ninth graders from different Texas high schools randomly selected two career and tech, career clusters from the 16 recognized pathways and were instructed to do research in them in terms of trends, concerns, and new developments to solve a problem. To ramp up the challenge, the three, four-member teams were told to conduct their research and presentations against a backdrop of being signed, assigned to a task force to address safety and security in the year 2030. This group of students researched their topics and CTE pathways for two weeks prior to the conference, and then presented their ideas to other groups. After receiving the challenge, the students worked tirelessly gathering research, designing solutions, interviewing guests, collaborating with other students, and creating their presentation until their final exhibition. Students didn't have to limit their research to traditional resources. Many interviewed school board members attending the conference and vendors in the exhibit hall, and conducted a Skype interview with an international aid worker in Kabul, Afghanistan. Please come forward to receive a certificate when I call your name. And we have Samuel Wu, who's not here, but his father's here, would love to come up here. Our freshmen are looking older and older, aren't they? And please welcome their teacher sponsor, who was with them all weekend, Meg Kendrick. Come on, Meg. While Meg's coming through, I'd like to recognize three members of the DLR group who were here and gave us this opportunity. Meg. So the three are Kate Miller, would you please stand and wave, Taryn Kenny, and Dr. Marilyn Dennison, a former College Station ISD employee. Thank y'all. I've been waiting all month for this one. This is our employee award that we get to recognize this evening. We like to recognize people who go on to state competitions, and we have a CSISD bus driver who's moving on to a state competition known as the Bus Road EO. College Station ISD bus driver Josh Shelton will represent the school district and the region at the state rodeo competition to be held in Corpus Christi in June. Josh qualified by taking first place at the CSISD versus BSISD rodeo and third at the regional competition in spring. What is rodeo, you ask? Because I asked it. What do you have to do? You have to, you have one, you have about 10 things that you have to do, including backing up in an alley, let's see, diminishing clearance, an event test the driver's ability to go in a straight line through obstacles with as little as one inch of clearance on each side, parallel parking, yes, with a bus, let's see, student pickup and stoplight and a number of other things. If you ever go past the transportation center, you'll see a bunch of obstacles in the parking lot there, and that's where Josh and our other drivers work to train. But Josh joined the College Station ISD Transportation Department in September of 2017. In addition to driving a daily route, he is a current journalism major at Texas A&amp;M. Please welcome Josh Shelton.
While everyone's getting settled, I'll go ahead and recognize the artwork that's on the back wall there. It's been provided by Cypress Grove Intermediate School, Oakwood Intermediate School, A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School, and College Station Middle School. So thank you to all our students from those schools who provided the work and, on your way out, or if the meeting gets slow, I guess during the meeting, you can look at it, because it really is some top-notch work. Next is our consent agenda, which would be items G, H1, H2, H3, J4, J5, J6, J7, J8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and 13. Does anyone wish to remove any of the consent agenda items? Okay, do we have a motion?
I would move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next are board announcements. Okay, I, well, I have a couple. The first one deals with, oh, an issue that I was talking with, of all things, a tax attorney, and one of the things that came up was our state funding, and I mentioned our current projected recapture payment, which we saw earlier tonight, was 14.2 million that we're projecting we have to send to the state next year. And this tax attorney said, hey, you know, there was a fairly recent TEA opinion on some homestead issues, so I'm just letting you know. One of the things that we will be, at least doing some preliminary research on, is there's a potential way to make use of some rulings to potentially whittle away at that recapture payment, in essence, so that our local taxpayers could keep potentially some of their more, or more of their tax dollars. It's still very early, and obviously, the administration hasn't weighed in on that. But I just wanted you to know about that discussion, because in the world of recapture payments, that we saw one almost projected up to 20 million, I found that to be some good news, at least possibly for us. The other thing was, I had a discussion with a member of the county about some transportation issues, and as we worked through some of our issues in those workshops about rezoning, one of the things that came up was transportation. And one of the issues in particular that I noticed, and I know you all did as well, were the projections about the work on Greens Prairie and how it basically was going to be finished out, except for a little stretch there that was going to serve as a bottleneck. So I don't know what role the school district will play, if any, moving forward on that, but I just wanted you all to know about that discussion that I had related to transportation, and hopefully, the local governing entities, and us included, can get together and maybe play a role on trying to get that finished out so that it could be a good thoroughfare for our citizens, but also our students, and for us in particular, our buses. Those are the announcements I had. Anyone else? Dr. Ely, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Just want to talk about some upcoming events. It's May, and it's an exciting time of the year. We get to wind down the year. For some, we're winding down a career in public school for our seniors who are graduating here at the end of the month, and there's lots of great activities that are happening over the next three weeks or two and a half weeks. We'll start that with tomorrow night, the Education, College Station ISD Education Foundation is hosting its scholarship night, and that's going to be tomorrow, Wednesday the 16th, at 6:00 PM at the Embassy Suites. So hopefully, many of you will be able to attend. We'll be giving out scholarships in excess of $50,000 to $60,000 for students, being able to start their college career off on a very positive note, being able to help pay for some of those costs for higher education. So that's tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. We come back on Thursday of this week, the 17th, and we'll be at Grace Bible Church Southwood for our Employee of the Year awards presentation and a recognition of our College Station ISD retirees. So again, that will be Thursday this week, day after tomorrow, the 17th, and that will be at 6 o'clock at Grace Bible Church at Southwood Campus, which is across New Oasis from A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Then we get to the last week of the month, and we've got four graduations to take note of. One, the first one occurs on Tuesday, May the 29th, at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. This is our Project Search graduation. These are for our students who work with Project Search at Baylor Scott &amp; White and doing a number of projects there. These are our students with disabilities who are over 18 years of age and are working on job skills, and so they will have their graduation ceremony. It's always a great time and a great celebration of these kids and the hard work they've done. And many of these kids will be paying off in full-time employment as a result of their work in Project Search. So that's Tuesday, the 29th, at 2:00 PM at Baylor Scott &amp; White. And then we will have the College View graduation on Thursday night, May 31st, at Christ United Methodist Church at 7:00. And so we will, we will have that on Thursday, as we traditionally do, at Christ United on the 31st. And then we have our two larger graduations with College Station High School and A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Those will both be on Friday, June the 1st, and both at Reed Arena. College Station High School will be at 4:00 PM, and A&amp;M Consolidated will be followed right after at 7:00 PM. And then we'll have everybody all graduated up by the end of the evening on June the 1st. So with that, Mr. Harris, that is my report.
Thank you. Next item, hearing of citizens. Do we have cards?
I think not.
Okay. Next item is I-1, consider approval of new administrator contracts as recommended by the superintendent of schools. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. With the opening of Riverbend Elementary School in 2019, we had the opportunity to fill that position and move some administrators to fill some needs at some various campuses. And we did that over the past month or so. And we had the opportunity, with those moves being made, to hire the right principal moving forward for Pebble Creek Elementary School. I had the opportunity to sit down with a number of parents and staff members from Pebble Creek and talk about what they visioned for a leader and who can help them make this next step, not only where they are right now, but where they'll be as they transition in the next couple of years. We had a tremendous interest in the job and a number of quality applicants, and it was a very difficult decision, but we had one candidate who rose to the top and is my recommendation this evening to be hired as a principal for College Station ISD with a placement at Pebble Creek Elementary School. Her name is Blair Glockson Grande. Blair is a graduate of A&amp;M Consolidated High School. She, she wanted to leave the community and go find, go find what the world looked like, so she went to Florida, and in that time, she had a great career there in Broward County, Florida, and met a, and met a man, and got married, and decided they were going to have a family. You know what? Sometimes, sometimes your home is a little bit better than you thought. And she and her husband, Rocco, decided to move back to the College Station area in 2012. Blair's worked as a special education teacher at South Knoll Elementary School. She has been for the last two years assistant principal at Spring Creek Elementary School, and it is my pleasure to recommend her to you tonight to be the next principal of Pebble Creek Elementary School. Blair and her husband, has a husband, Rocco, who is assistant principal at Oakwood Intermediate School, and Blair and Rocco have two kids, Gianna's six and Alessandra, who is three. So I'm, is Blair here? Blair, would you stand up and wave to the crowd? Mr. Harris, members of the board, it'd be my recommendation that we named Blair Glockson Grande as the next principal of Pebble Creek Elementary School. I'd love to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Ely. Are there any questions or discussion?
I would move that we approve Blair Grande as the principal, new principal for Pebble Creek Elementary.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Takes us to I-2, consider approval of administrative contracts. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. Each year, we come to the board with the approval of the extension of administrative contracts. With more information is Greg McIntyre, Chief Administrative Officer. Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. Each year, administrators with two or more years of CSISD administrative experience are eligible for an extension of their existing two-year term contracts. This extension would be until June 30th of 2020. According to CSISD policy, DC Local, superintendent has the authority to make recommendations to the board regarding the selection of administrators. The board retains the final authority for employment of administrators. And so it is with that, that is the recommendation, excuse me, is a recommendation from the superintendent of schools regarding the extensions and issuance of contracts to administrators until June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I move that we accept the recommendation of the superintendent regarding the extension of contracts to administrators.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Takes us to J-1, consider approval of request for competitive sealed proposals for interactive classroom display equipment for Welborn Middle School from Avenex in the amount of $343,481 to be purchased using 2015 bond funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. If you haven't missed the little construction project we've got going on between Welborn Road and Reuter Road, we're working to get Welborn Middle School finished when we open school on August 20th. And as such, there's a lot of purchasing that must happen over the summer. So we have a number of items here for the, for the opening of Welborn Middle School. The first one has to do with interactive classroom displays for Welborn Middle School. And with more information is Mike Martindale, Deputy Superintendent, Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. As part of our 2015 bond program, requests for competitive seal proposals for interactive classroom display equipment for Welborn Middle School were mailed to 11 vendors and advertised accordingly in our local newspaper and posted on the College Station ISD website. A pre-proposal meeting was held and four vendors attended. Two responded to the request for competitive seal proposals. Staff from technology and purchasing departments evaluated and scored all submitted proposals. Avenex submitted lowest proposal and received a high score as per attached, the attached evaluation matrix in your agenda. It is administration's recommendation that the board accept a proposal for interactive classroom display equipment for Welborn Middle School from Avenex in the amount of $343,481. We will utilize 2015 bond funds for this purchase if approved.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Do we have any questions or discussion before you proceed with that? I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter.
I make the motion we approve as presented.
All second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with one abstention. Takes us to item J-2, consider approval of purchase of desktop computers and monitors for Welborn Middle School, STEM labs at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School and College Station Middle School and various other campuses throughout the district from Avenex in the amount of $771,379 per DIR contract using 2013 and 2015 bond funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. Yes, we have desktop computers and monitors for Welborn Middle School, plus we have a STEM lab each. STEM stands for science, technology, engineering, and math, one lab each at A&amp;M Consolidated One lab each at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School and College Station Middle School and some other computer replacements. With more information is Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. As mentioned, as a part of our 2013 and 15 bond programs, Technology Department has identified the needed computers for the opening of Welborn Middle School, also as mentioned for STEM labs at both our existing middle schools, A&amp;M Consolidated and College Station Middle School, as well as the need to replace aging computers at various campuses throughout the district. These computers and monitors are available per the Department of Information Resources contract with Hewlett-Packard. The DIR is an agency of the state of Texas and established contracts with vendors for technology-related products. Their contracts have been competitively bid and meet competitive bid requirements. It is the administration's recommendation that the board approve the purchase, pre-imaging and delivery of HP computers to the Welborn and both A&amp;M Consolidated, College Station Middle School, and various other campuses in the amount of $771,379 from Avanext, and this is per DIR contract, DIR TSO 2538. And we would utilize both 2013 and 15 bond funds for this purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. As before, I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter. With that said, is there any discussion?
One of the questions I have, without getting too far in the weeds, is the reason that it's 2013 and 2015 is we did not have enough money in 2013 to pay for the whole cost or is there other requirements?
15 is specifically those needs associated with Welborn. The other computers being picked up through 13 funds.
I make the motion we approve as presented.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries six zero with one abstention. Item J-3. Consider approval of purchase of uninterruptible power systems, power protection and battery backup for Welborn Middle School from Avanext in the amount of $53,437 per Texas A&amp;M University multimedia contract using 2015 bond funds. Dr. Ely.
Mr. President, members of the board, every once in a while, as we buy these computers, every once in a while, the lights go out and we want to make sure that they can stay up for a matter of time till we can get everything shut down. And so that's where the UPS power protection and battery backups come in. So what we have for you is the purchase of these for Welborn Middle School in the amount of $53,437. With more information, Mr. Martindale.
Yes, sir. The 2015 bond program identifies the need for the uninterruptible power systems for Welborn Middle School. And this does provide Welborn Middle School with power protection and battery backup for the network and communication systems. The Technology Department did work with Avanext to secure the quote, and the quote was secured via the Texas A&amp;M University multimedia contract, C5535732. And all the items have been competitively bid and meet bid requirements. These prices are available to CSISD through our inter-local purchasing agreement with Texas A&amp;M University. It is administration's recommendation the board approve the purchase of the UPS equipment for power protection and battery backup for Welborn Middle School from Avanext in the amount of $53,437 per the Texas A&amp;M University multimedia contract, and again, using 2015 bond funds for the purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Sound like a broken record here. As before, I will abstain from discussion and voting on this matter. Is there any discussion?
I would move we approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero with one abstention. That takes us down to L-1, our executive session items. Dr. Ely.
Mr. Harris, members of the board, we posted the agenda for today's meeting on Friday. Between the posting of the agenda and today's meeting, both of the items that you see here have been resolved. There's no need for a closed session on items L-1 or L-2. Likewise, there is no action required on items M-1 and M-2. So the administration is pulling these four items from the agenda.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.